Let us pray. Do heavenly Father, we're so thankful to be here another day to do the business of Newton County, Lord. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom and bless us with discernment. We thank you for everyone here. We thank you for our community. We thank you for letting us rise again this morning, Lord. We ask that you put your blessing upon this board tonight as we go about this business, Lord. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards, and thank you, Commissioner Mason. Commissioners, if you would, we want to make an... We want to make... We want to add an addition into the agenda tonight. We want to make 9A. 9A. A facilities use agreement with American Red Cross. You guys should have information in front of you. Want to make that 9A. With that being said, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. You may come up at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You may come up at this time. You have three minutes to do so. Citizen comments. Thank you. Next, it's the chairman's report. I don't have anything tonight, so I'm going to go down to the county manager's report. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few things that I wanted to let you know about. Couple of things that have been going on. One is that we are continuing to have our hazard mitigation plan meetings. This is something that was started back last October, and we're continuing to have those meetings to put that, finalize that plan. Our facilities, building and facilities department has installed several glass when... service windows in several of the offices to provide for us, as a safety measure for our employees, particularly those who are... have regular contact with the public. And with the recent storms that we had, that had... We received some hail damage, some to vehicles, and so we've been doing some inspections. And hopefully, we will have those completed and get an insurance settlement out of those, particularly on the roof on this building. We have a total of 75,763 active voters in the county. We're continuing to train people, and we are hiring people for our elections department, for those election workers. We anticipate that there will be a very large turnout, and so we're trying to do everything we can to prepare for our November election. And just this last month, we've had over 3,000 new voter registration applications that we've had to process. Our EMA department is... Has been helping with obtaining COVID-19 test kits, and they've used those and have been given, have given some of those to the sheriff's office to help out with testing there, as well as in the fire department when we had an exposure there in the last month. GIS is working on 3D data that will be deployed soon, and so that we'll be able to... You'll be able to see buildings and features on the ground in the 3D perspective. That was something that we don't have now. That will enhance the ability of our tax assessors' department, but also of public safety to view the buildings and the actual... Things that are happening on the ground there. We recently had a drawing from, as a part of our health and wellness program, and we gave away a big, a big green egg. And this was purchased out of the money that we are given, that we receive from Blue, or from Cigna for our health and wellness program. Amy Morgan in GIS was the recipient of that, and so congratulations to her. She's a relatively new employee. She's only been with us about three months now. So, we're real glad for her. Also, we are doing upgrades in our courtrooms, and right now, you can stream any of the cases that are brought up in our courtroom four, which is the new courtroom in the judicial center, are on the Alcovey Judicial Circuit YouTube channel, and so you can see those now from courtroom four. We are in the process of doing all the same upgrades to courtrooms one, two, and three, but that will be in the next several months that we'll get those done. And just an announcement, Rivers Alive and Great American Cleanup currently is scheduled for Saturday, September 26th, so if you want to put those on your calendars. The design for the, as you all know, we're going to be doing some intersection improvements at Jack Neely and Kirkland Road. The design for the roundabout that we're proposing to put there is about 85, 85% complete, so we're moving along with that project at this point. Also, some couple of interesting things from the animal services department. We had 80 adoptions during the month of August, and, which is the most we've ever had. Also, we had, and I mentioned this to you earlier, power of the internet. We had a 10-year-old dog that had been an owner surrender that was seen by a couple on the internet, and they drove all the way from Michigan to come down here and adopt that dog. So, it's amazing what, what the internet does. Also, and we had somebody from Tennessee who actually came down and adopted a dog, and then, of course, had the dog neutered, and then came back down from Tennessee to pick the dog up. So, it shows we have a presence not only here in Georgia, but it looks like we've got people from all over that are looking at our, our animals. So, that's great. Also, we did have a, a, an incident of the virus over in our DA's office, so we did have an occasion to, where we needed to clean, go through and do a deep clean on that office once again, and so we've done that. The COVID-19 snapshot that you have in front of you shows where we are. Newton County has 2,257 confirmed cases, and unfortunately, we've had 61 deaths. Over on the third page of that, you can see the distribution of those, those cases, and it looks like that age 35 to 49 is where the largest number of those cases are, are showing up, followed, or, I'm sorry, 50 to 64, followed very closely by 35 to 49. So, between 35 and 64 are where the most cases are in Newton County. And of course, all of this information is available on our website, as well as the Gwinnett Newton Rockdale Department of Public Health Department's website as well. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lord, where we at is for hazard pay for our first responders. Last meeting, we talked a little bit about it, so where we at now?
I'm sorry, the, what was the?
I'm sorry, hazard pay, hazard pay, you know?
The hazard pay?
For our first responders.
Right now, we're waiting to hear when or whether or not the governor will be releasing any more funding, CARES Act funding to any of the counties.
I have just a follow-up question for you, may I?
Go ahead, sir.
How does the other counties, other counties and cities, for example, city government has given their first responders hazard pay, I think about two or three months ago? It's my understanding, I believe Rockdale has two as well. So, we have to apply to the, to the governor's office for our first responder to receive hazard pay?
Different counties use different funding sources. There is money available in the CARES Act for public safety personnel, but one of the, you know, the, and for what they've identified as first responders, but the definition that they use for first responders is very, very narrow. And we had personnel, we had building inspectors, code enforcement officers, we had people working in the offices that did have public contact with the public. And so that's one of the other considerations, I think, that we have to make if we do decide, if the, and the board would have to make a decision on whether or not to, to, to do or to give hazard pay. We would have to define what the first responders are, or who would be eligible to receive the hazard pay, and then we have to identify the funding source. One of those funding source, some of that funding source could be CARES Act money, assuming that we would get another distribution of that money. The remainder would have to come, we would have to do most likely a budget amendment from reserves in order to do any, to pay the additional funds, or the additional people.
Just one last question. If, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be bonding money for, you know, other things, is it possible to bond a certain amount of money for the, for hazard pay?
No, sir. We can only bond money for capital projects, and payroll is not, would not be an eligible expense for bonding.
Thank you, Lord. And just one last comment. I think that we as a board, I think we should look out for our first responders who have contracted the COVID-19, and I know, I want to say personally, because I haven't met the individual from the office of sheriff and other offices, and I think you just mentioned it, and so they're on the front line, and I think they deserve that pay.
Commissioner Schoes. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schoes.
So, no question, just wanted to make an observation that on the, on the report that you provided us, it looks like Newton's positivity rate is now at 10.3%. On August 18th, when we adopted the mask ordinance, it was at 12.4%. So, it appears that it, it has made a difference, and I think that that's, hopefully, it's still, you know, we, we know that anything over 10% is still considered high, but it looks like it's coming in the right direction. So, I think that we made a good decision with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Seek a motion that we approve, please. Can I get a motion, please? Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason, and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Schoes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lloyd, I have a question about 8C, ratification of the FY2020 contract for medical services at the county jail with NAF Care. That seems to be an item that was in a budget that we've already completed, so I'm just curious as to why that is on this particular agenda.
I actually had a discussion with Sam Van Valkenburg this afternoon about that. It appears that the contract, the FY20 contract was with NAF Care, was actually with the Board of Commissioners and with the sheriff. And that was a, an extension, a one-year extension of that contract. And the sheriff signed that along with NAF Care, but it was never brought to the board for y'all's approval and signature. So, that's why it's being done at this point, is to ratify that, to have your signature for y'all to ratify that, so that there's a subsequent, a little later in the agenda, there is a request for an amendment to that contract. And so, in order to do that amendment, or, yeah, in order to do that amendment, this has to be, this would have to be approved, because this is the contract that's being amended. And if, if, if I've misspoken on any of that, Sam, if you would help, you know, if you would correct me if I'm, if I have missed.
That's substantially correct. The, the original agreement ended in 2018, and that agreement was between the county and NAF Care. And by the terms of that agreement, any extension would also have to have been signed by the county. And I don't know why it wasn't brought to the county last year, but this is sort of getting all our ducks in a row, kind of a housekeeping measure.
So, if I look at page 12 in our book, board book, it does not, oh, okay, I do see that it says between Newton County, Georgia, and the Office of Sheriff. Okay, I missed that before. That, I, I thought it was just the Office of Sheriff. So... So, basically, when we have a contract with our, the healthcare provider for the jail, we just need to make sure that it's done in a timely manner, and if there's some type of a tickler that we could make sure that that happens, it just seems kind of... Seems like, you know, that that's a little bit, I don't even want to use the word sloppy, but it's not something that we need to make a habit of doing, where we approve a contract that's already expired.
Sure. Anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Our next on the agenda is... Item number nine, R090120, Resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners Approving a Mandatory Mask Policy for the County Facilities. Sam, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as you will recall, this board approved a mask ordinance at its last meeting. The ordinance, simply due to the jurisdictional reach, or lack thereof, of the county, would not apply in, in the cities, in incorporated areas of the county. And so, to ensure that we are applying substantially the same policies in our county buildings and other facilities inside cities, this policy basically mirrors what we have already put in place in our ordinance. I did take out a few provisions that are obviously inapplicable, such as there's an, there was an exception in the ordinance for private property, and that just wouldn't even apply, because it's only considering county property. And I should have pointed out to you before beginning that I had circulated a, a policy. It's not in your book, or there's a policy in your book, but that is not the most recent policy. This, this loose-leaf policy is the one that I'm asking you to approve. And I'm also asking you to approve it with a minor typo correction. Instead of eight years and older, the policy would require that only those older than eight years of old, eight, eight years of age, wear a mask in, in county property. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sam. So, so who, this will apply mostly to employees and peoples who are serving at the, for instance, the admins building?
That's right. It would also apply, I think, up here, subject to all the exceptions that are already in the ordinance, and I guess any other county facilities that, where there might be public spaces where employees and citizens will interact with each other.
Does HR have policies for dealing, dealing with employees that don't wear the mask or refuse to wear the mask, or are they asking them, you know, what's, why aren't you wearing a mask? I mean, what are we going to do about that?
Well, I don't, I guess I don't know if HR has a specific policy on that. If it came to it, an employee who refused to put on a mask in an area where one was required could be asked to leave the building or put on a mask, and if they didn't, they, you know, they could even call on the sheriff and get forcibly remove them from the building. But I don't think that will happen.
Unless they meet, claim one of the exemptions.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Schoes?
So, Sam, the one that was in our packet versus the one that you provided, the only difference is item, under item B, number two, is that the only one that's different?
Yes, I think I may have revised B1 as well, but section B is, is where the difference is, yes. And that, to summarize the essence of that, in the one that's in your book, the, the policy kind of broadly applies to anyone in, in a county building. And in this new policy, we've gotten a little more specific in two ways. First, we have a section that applies to employees, which makes it clear that if you are in a county building and not in a public space, you do not need to be wearing a mask. If you have an office and you shut the door, you don't need to be having a mask in there. The other way in which this was clarified was to state that in courtrooms and in other areas that may be county facilities, but yet are under the control of, of the judges or some other entity, this policy would, would not apply, that their rules would apply.
Can I keep going?
Anyone else? Commissioner Schoes?
So, all right, so Sam, so one of my concerns is always the square park, because that's a county-owned facility that is managed, or say, or we have an intergovernmental agreement with the city, and now the city has an ordinance. So, does this particular resolution, does it deal with the square park, because it's a county-owned facility?
I'm afraid I don't recall specifically in relation to that IGA with the city, who has the right to control the square. If the city has the right to control the square, then, then they, they can impose their requirements. If, if we have the right to control the square, then we can impose our requirements, and I guess they could also seek to enforce there.
As my recollection about the IGA, we, we on the square, we, the IGA is more for maintenance and operation, not for enforcement on the square. So, you know, that's an area that we seem to see people not wearing masks, and I think that we need to make, we need to figure out how, if we're going to have a mask policy, how we're going to enforce a mask policy on the square, because it's right in the center where people can see. And, you know, one of the things that I would recommend is that we just have, we have some signage out there that people understand what the mask, that there is a mask ordinance. Lot of times, the signage helps more than anything, if we can have that. But I do, I just wanted to make sure that this gives us that authority on the square. And then, like, for example, at Turner Lake, which we own, it, it applies to Turner Lake as well, Lake Varner, and all the other parks.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Schoes?
I move for approval of resolution R090120, Resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners Approving a Mandatory Mask Policy for County Facilities and Incorporated Areas.
With corrections.
With, with corrections, as stipulated by the county attorney.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Schoes, and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It passes four to one. Thank you. Our next is item 9A, Facility Use Agreement with Red Cross. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a standard agreement that the American Red Cross generally enters into with entities with whom they have agreed to utilize a facility that a local government may own or a private company may own. And I'm sorry, this came in very late today, but due to the fact that there has been such damage with the hurricanes and all down in Louisiana and Texas, they have asked that we make available a facility in the event that we might need to temporarily house some of the refugees from there. And so, we're suggesting Wolverine Gym over at Cousins Middle School. And so, what I would like is, I, I would request that this agreement be approved pending legal review, because I know that, obviously, our legal team has not had an opportunity to review all, any of the tenets of it, and there may be something in here that might be objectionable that we would need to, to amend in some way. But it's, it's a basic, it is relatively basic, and I've just had time to glance at it myself. But what this would do would be just to make our facility available to the Red Cross, should they need it. And again, if the approval could be pending legal review.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion for that. I mean, you can make a motion so we can get it to discussion.
I move to approve the facility use agreement for, with the Red Cross, for the use of Wolverine Gym for a shelter.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Schoes, and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion now. Commissioner Henderson?
Well, the question I have is, is that...
Well, the question I have is that why not use the building also? Depending on how many people that, spaces that you need for people.
At this point, we're looking at the gym mainly because it, that's an area that we could dedicate to that use because it is air-conditioned and there are bathrooms available and so forth. The parts of the, oops, the parts of the building that are not in use, a lot of that area is really not suitable to be used. The parts that have been remodeled and whatnot that are in use would have to continue to be in use for, you know, our EMA folks are in there. The DDS is there, and Juvenile Justice is also located over there. So those parts of the building would continue to be in use. And the parts that are not would really probably not be suitable. So, and this would be just a very temporary type of thing.
You would have to feed them. I mean, so with the cafeteria being used too as well unless you just...
That might be a possibility. But what has been done in the past is that Red Cross has generally provided, for want of a better term, box meals or bag meals. Sometimes they provided hot meals, but it's been, they have utilized services like the food trucks, Chick-fil-A, and that sort of thing. Certainly, if we saw that there was a need for the kitchen, that kitchen actually would need work in order to be usable. But the area in there where the caf, I guess it was the old cafeteria, that might be, that might be usable for tables and whatnot. But as far as the kitchen itself, I don't think it's usable in a usable condition at this point.
One last statement. When and if it's going to be utilized, I would like somebody to let me know so that we'll be able to, you know, kind of go over and come over and monitor what's going on because it is in District Four.
Sure. And I'll be glad to notify you. So, so far, they haven't said that they would need it, but they did ask if we would be willing to provide a space.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Commissioner Shoals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in the most recent hurricane, a lot of the shelters because of COVID-19, there were restrictions on those shelters because of the crowding. And so they actually used hotel rooms in the area. And I would say that we probably need to be mindful of the fact that at least for this particular hurricane season or this particular storm season, we need to be really cautious about how many people we would allow to be in that type of an enclosed environment. And perhaps even work with the Red Cross to work with some of our local hotels. Because most of the hotels are probably not at capacity right now. And look at having that as a secondary option. I know we don't own those properties, but we certainly don't want to put people in a situation where they're provided shelter, but then they are, get sick.
Right. They're very conscious of that and of that fact. And this facility would give them enough space that they could still house a fair number of people, but keep them separated. There would be a good deal of separation. So, and I know that they're very much aware of the need for that. And they need to make sure they follow the proper protocols for, you know, the personal protective gear and the sanitation needs and so forth.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify because in this draft agreement, there is no, there are sections for compensation to the county that have been left blank. Do you know what would be filled in there?
Well, yeah, that's part of the, and I saw that as I was coming upstairs. So that's something that we're going to need to fill in there. That, and that was for, primarily for, I think there was a section in there for utilities. And I think there was another section for just a fee for the use of the facility. I don't believe we charge any fee for the facility, but, you know, unless it, the board thinks otherwise. But we would probably want to try to cover the cost of the utilities if there was, if there was a need for, if there was a need to do so. If we saw that we were going to be doing this for an extended period of time and it was going to have an impact on how we conditioned the building.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I share the concerns of Commissioner Shoals and Commissioner Henderson. And it has nothing to do with a resolution that may or may not come out of 9A here. But I know when, during Katrina, or after Katrina, the FFA camp housed those folks. And they would certainly be more equipped than we would at the county to facilitate feeding and social distancing. So I would highly encourage the Red Cross to maybe go that route. I don't want to, I wouldn't, I'd hate to say we don't want to use our facilities. Our county facilities, we certainly want to help those in distress. But the FFA camp, the state is much, much more equipped and a better, a much better conduit of funds for that type thing than we are, I would think. So just another thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? The pass is five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number 10. A resolution R 090120B. A resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to ratify the, to ratify execution of, execution of the Coronavirus Relief Fund Terms and Conditions Agreement to authorize the acceptance of the grant payments, including all understanding and assurances contained with such agreement to direct and authorize the person identified as the official representative of the county or designee of the county to act in connection with the grant applications to provide such additional information as much, as may be required. I'm sorry. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is part of the acceptance of, part of the acceptance process for the relief funds and is part of the process that we need to do in order to complete receiving those funds. And so we are essentially checking off a box in the process of the CARES, the CARES Act and the, and completing what we need to do in order to continue receiving those funds with the rest of this process. We did, you did assign the documents and agreed to do all of the things that were required of the receipt of the money, abiding by all the laws and regulations and so forth. But there was also a requirement for us to adopt this resolution. And we, while, it's ideal to have adopted it at that same time. However, there was no requirement to adopt it at the beginning of this. So that's why, what we are adopting it now.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
So moved as stated by the chairman.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. We talking about 2.5. The 2.5, 2 million, 2 and a half million dollars. And we talking about that, those funds. Just look to Lloyd.
Lloyd, can you give us that number, the correct number on that again, please?
It's, it is the total, this resolution covers the total amount that we would receive through the CARES Act. There's, currently, there's Phase One, where we have received a little over $4 million. And, but there's, our understanding is there will be a Phase Two. We do not know how much money that will be. And so this resolution covers both of those distributions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lloyd, who's the person that's going to be responsible for this? Are you not hiring a person, are you?
The chairman is actually named as the person responsible. But, you know, as is the case with anything like that, it's the chairman or would be, then would be designated to...
You're not hiring another person to handle this?
No, no, no.
Commissioner Shoals.
Lloyd, how many more hoops we're going to have to jump through to get this CARES money? It seems like there's always another hoop to jump through.
Well, yes. It's been a very difficult process. Very difficult.
I'm just curious, does ACCG have a list of all those requirements that we can just make sure we've checked off all the boxes?
Actually, it was in the terms and conditions of the, of the grant itself. And it is available on the governor's, on the web, the governor's website, the Office of Planning and Budget. And it's available on that website. You can go and get it off of there. But all of the requirements there for accepting the grants and what is eligible, what's not eligible, is all spelled out there. There's also information on the Treasury Department's website on eligible expenses, what's eligible and what's not eligible to, for expenses and all. But there is, that is available. ACCG, I think, has a link to all of it. And they've been, they've been pretty helpful through the process. But, but it's, it's been kind of difficult to work with because there was a lot of miscommunication about the process, about the funding itself, when it was, when we were going to get it. And then what were the restrictions and what was the process? All of that was very late coming. And then there was a very, a quick timeline on returning the expenditures and sending the requests back to the state to get approvals. Now, we were able to make those, but we still have not gotten the confirmation that all of the things that we submitted were approved.
So last question. All of the different buckets of money and the fact that we're partnering with Salvation Army and Laura Bertram's partnership, are we ready to roll all this information out to the different groups? For example, individuals and nonprofits? Do we have, is that all ready? Are those applications ready?
We're ready to do that. But because of this, because of the uncertainty and the failure of the state to actually commit that there will be the second phase, we're holding off on doing anything further until we do get that commitment from the state that there will be a Phase Two. We were told in the beginning, you'll have Phase One, and then there'll be a Phase Two. But now, it seems that there's been silence on the Phase Two part. So we may or may not be getting any more money. And so what we've done, what I've done is just, everyone is on hold at this, at this point. But I do have a committee formed of people with the Chamber of Commerce who will work with us on small business grants and the Salvation Army and Family Connections and a representative from some other 501(c)(3)'s working as a committee to help screen the applications for the community grants, which would be for 501s. And all, and the applications are all there and all of that is in place. But as far as moving ahead, we're just, we're kind of at a standstill now because we have not heard word from the governor's office on whether or not we're going to get that next money. ACCG and GMA have sent letters twice to the governor's office that I'm aware of, asking when and if, and there's not been any response.
But we're ready as soon as the money comes in.
And I went ahead, you know, we went ahead and got all this in place because I was under the impression that we would be getting that and getting that soon because all of this funding is supposed to run out by December 30th. And that there was to be the first phase, everything had to be spent by September 1st. And the second phase then would go until December 30th. So there was, but yes, we're ready to go. Now, hopefully, there won't be too much of a delay because it's a very short period of time to have people apply and to get there, and then to have a review. The committees review the applications and determine whether or not it's the projects or whether or not they're, the projects are eligible or whether or not the individuals are eligible for the funding. And then there has to be the distribution. So if they don't move ahead fairly quickly, then it'll be very difficult to distribute, you know, if we get any large sum of, a large sum of money.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I promise you, I had this question before I understood you to be the designee, but I'll ask it anyway. So I think, and I guess I'm talking to you now and Lloyd and probably Brittany too, right? So we need to be real sure our internal controls are tight. It sounds like we've got a lot of organizations that are going to have their hand in the, rightly so, hand out, hand in the pie. And I'd hate to pick up the paper one morning and read or get a call from the chairman saying, we got a problem. And it'd be $50,000 missing or something like that, you know? So our internal controls are going to be key in this whole deal, I would believe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lloyd, I wanted to ask, and I think I remember in a previous discussion, but I just wanted to clarify within my own brain. You had mentioned in Phase One that it's a possibility we'll be getting like a little bit over 4 million. Did we have in a previous discussion that the CARES Act monies that we get will be shared with our municipalities? Or would that just be coming all to the county?
The municipalities receive their own distribution. And what we received was for the county. But each of the cities receive their own funding.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to clarify because that's what I thought, but I couldn't remember when we had that discussion. And then also, the CARES Act monies that we do receive, is it going to be just for small businesses, nonprofits? Did we actually declare that we would set aside any for our citizens? If they had like any issues, say like mortgage... If they had like any issues, say like mortgage or utilities or anything like that? Did we put any of that in there for the CARES Act as well?
That would be, that was going to be covered under, um, what I termed as community grants. Um, there would be, um, um, some of the money would be for individuals and families. Um, and that, of course, this would be coming from the, from the phase two money. The phase one money wound up being reimbursement to the county for all of our expenses, um, uh, in relation to, to COVID-19. Um, and that is where most of all of the counties, uh, that really is what they have done. The only exception are the counties that received the, um, that's mainly because of the timeframe we had to work under. Um, but the only exception to that are the counties that received their funding directly from Treasury Department, their CARES Act funds, and that was Cobb, Fulton, Gwinnett, DeKalb, City of Atlanta, and I think there may have been one other. Um, but each of those, uh, counties has set up, um, programs essentially the same as what, and that's what I did. I went and looked at their programs and said, this is what we ought to do here in, in Newton County. And if, if we got our, you know, we got the funding, and so that's kind of where that came from. Um, but it's because they got all of their funding and they got it all direct from their government, uh, from the, the Treasury Department, um, they have all of their funding and there was nothing that was held back at the state. Um, and they didn't have to go through the state to get their, to get their funding. They're submitting their, um, requests for reimbursement directly to the Treasury Department and not, um, and not, you know, not to the state. And of course, they had, you know, pretty large pots to begin with, but, um, but everybody else really, because of the time crunch, only had time to, um, and the same thing with us, really only had time to submit for what our expenses were because it took, uh, quite a period of time to get things established and they got a program set up. Um, and once you got the program set up, really that was, we about ran out of time for, um, you know, having, uh, to, because we had to have all of this money, uh, accounted for or spent, if you will. Um, we had to submit everything for reimbursement by September 1st, which we did, so.
Okay, so going forward, we, we can, we will probably, like, say for example, in the future, if we ever have such a pandemic, we'll basically have the model in place where we can go directly to the Treasury versus having to go to the state the next time? Is that even possible for us to do?
It, it would depend on whether or not we met the, uh, that decision was made, uh, based on population. And, uh, it was done, any county or municipality that had a population over 500,000, um, was given the direct, um, allocation from Treasury Department. Um, and of course, we don't, didn't meet that threshold. Um, but those counties that I talked about did, most of those, um, you know, well, Gwinnett's a million people, I think Cobb and Fulton are at 700,000 plus, you know, so. Um, but yeah, I mean, we have something in place, so if this ever happens again. But hopefully, uh, there will be a phase two and then we will get some money, um, so that we can do these programs.
Lloyd, there will be a phase two. Um, I got the call today. Um, it was around five, so I didn't get a chance to sit down with you. Um, but they wanna make sure that none of the criteria is gonna, uh, change for, uh, being able to receive a fund. So I should hear something back from, um, Kelly tomorrow.
Great, great, thank you. That's good news to a lot of people.
A lot of good news. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Lloyd, you mentioned the fact that the cities will get their own allotment. Um, so for instance, a small business in Porterdale applies for the grant through Porterdale. Can he also apply through Newton County?
Well, the, when I, we first brought this, uh, the board had voted to, um, to just restrict the business grants to small businesses in the unincorporated area. Um, and so that, that's what had been, that's what's been decided was unincorporated, so.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number 11, um, Resolution R090120C, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners, um, authorizing, uh, to execute agreement governing expenditures for the state and local government costs. Mr. Kerr.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this resolution is actually to, uh, receive funds from the hazardous waste trust fund, and I believe it's in the amount of $1,019,000. Well, I'm sorry, $1,019,101.15. Um, this is funding, um, that will be used, uh, for repairs at the, um, uh, landfill. Um, and those are, to reimburse the county for repairs that had occurred, uh, that have occurred, and I believe they're going back to the, um, to a spill that happened at the landfill back in 2016. Uh, Kevin is here, um, Kevin Walter, the director, in case you have any other questions. But I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, Kevin.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner, I seek a motion. Commissioner Shokes.
It is with great pleasure that I make this motion because that hazardous trust fund money needs to come back to the county. Um, Resolution R090120C, resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners authorizing to execute agreement governing expenditures for state and local government costs.
It's been motioned by, um, Commissioner Shokes and second by Commissioner, um, Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Next is item number 12, Resolution R090120D, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners authorize reimbursement from the anticipated bond proceeds of the current county expense for fire station number four. Um, Sam, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is, uh, the first of two resolutions that were recommended by the county's, uh, bond council. Um, and in the second resolution, we'll be appointing members to the Public Facilities Authority. Uh, in the coming months, it's anticipated that that authority will issue, uh, debt of approximately $5 million for purposes of fire station number four. Um, but so that we can, uh, go ahead and purchase the underlying property and start constructing fire station four now and repay ourselves with the proceeds of that bond. Uh, this resolution, um, establishes the intent, um, which I guess is a, a technical bond requirement.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Uh, Commissioner, um, Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can make a motion to approve Resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to authorize reimbursement from anticipated bond proceeds of current county expenses for fire station number four facilities and equipment.
Second. It's a motion by Commissioner, um, Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Discussion. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, a while back, we, uh, we had talked about the funding of, of the fire station. I think it was about, um, I think it estimated about five million. And then there was, uh, 200, the one said $30,000 for, um, that we found in the budget to do the plans, if I'm not mistaken. So the question that I wanna ask, why can't we bond some additional money for, uh, for the R. Cousins building? You know, we just, I think, um, covered this, uh, discussion maybe a couple of discussions ago. We talked about the possibility of, uh, people coming from Texas and using, uh, debt facility at some point. So why can't we bond $5 million to start on the, the phase one? I think five million, estimated eight million to start on, on phase one of, of the old Cousins, uh, in this bonding? I guess, I guess it's to the term.
Um, well, I, I guess, like, I don't see a, a legal restriction on bonding funds, um, for any particular project. It's sort of more of a policy decision of the board, uh, which, which are the highest priority projects.
Absolutely. And then, you know, I think Lloyd had talked about, um, also when doing discussion, the walk that we done, that that was a site for the election after early voting. Because, you know, we know right now that if you went into the admin building, you know, we had limited spacing a few months ago, now we're even, you know, limited spacing now. So then, I think this would be the prime opportunity to go out and, and bond an additional $5 million while we're burning for this, for the fire station, which is needed over there way to set far aside, to, to go ahead and start on, uh, it won't happen this election, but the next election that comes, hopefully, we have something in place where we can, all people can come and store the, uh, voting machines. So I don't, you know, I don't, you know, I don't see no reason why we as a board, we shouldn't support that at Cousins, property that's owned by Newton County, uh, additional $5 million. A bonding, cuz it's, you know, I think, um, there's something that needed. We'd say we're gonna do something to it, and then here's the prime opportunity to do it. So if I, if I could, I would like, like to make a motion, substitute motion. If I may, I think I can do it, to, uh, add the additional $5 million. Would you be bringing the bond to a total of $10 million to, um, to do the work that we talked about a little bit earlier about Cousins and, uh, possible, uh, uh, playground or whatever the objects, stuff that we need, that we had said we needed over there to be attached to this one?
So let me make sure I got it right. You making a substitute motion to add an additional $5 million to, I'm sorry?
Total of $10 million.
A total of $10 million, um, $5 million to, um, refurbish our real cousin's middle school. I get a second? It's been motioned by, um, Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this an item, excuse me? Is this an item that needs to be on a separate agenda item as opposed to tacking it onto another motion? I mean, you're talking about a $5 million expansion of a separate project when we are talking about on the agenda, we've got a fire station, then we're talking about adding the school to it. So, I mean, I think it has to be a separate agenda item, but.
No, I mean, he, Commissioner Henderson, he made a substitute motion and it passed, so I got to open it up. Is that correct?
Well, I'm, I'm asking the question, does it, does this really need to be on a motion or does it have to be a separate agenda item?
Same. Thank you.
Uh, I mean, as a purely procedural matter, I, I think it would be appropriate to just revise this resolution, um, and I don't think it needs to be a separate agenda item.
Any more, Commissioner, um, um, Edwards.
So let me make sure I understand this. Where, if this, if the substitute motion does not pass, the funding for the station forced, for, uh, station four will not be fun, not be there, right?
No, if the motion doesn't pass, it go back to the original motion.
But if the motion?
If the motion passes, then we gonna bond $10 million. That's not right, Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that correct, Sam?
Yeah, so there, if, if the, if the substitute motion doesn't pass, there's still the opportunity to pass the original resolution with the $5 million.
Uh, Mr. Kerr?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanted to, um, make sure the board was aware. We did budget fi, for the debt service for a $5 million bond. We did not budget for the debt service for a $10 million bond. So there would be, we, we don't have, we, we don't have that budgeted in this fiscal, in this current budget.
Thanks, sir. You know what, Commissioner Henderson?
Just wanna make a final comment. You know, it's been somebody talking about, um, Newton One. But when it comes to something over on this side of town, town, we always bypass it and say, well, we'll wait later. And this, this was, this is not nothing new. We brought this up when we first talked about burning a fire station over in District One. We said, well, there's other needs to it in, in the county. We said that, and I think that's only fair to the citizens in Newton County. A lot of them, but, you know, maybe we'll have something, you know, different, different way of thinking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner, um, Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I, what, what I, what I have a problem with is a want versus a need. I got houses that could burn down. Well, I, I don't understand how we can put those two together. I remotely think about putting those two together. Cousins, Cousins School a, and the renovation of that school is a want, not a need. Uh, the need is for a fire station in District One, is what it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Lloyd, I wanted to ask, um, you, you mentioned that we, I suppose, didn't budget it in this, um, budget for 2021. If we don't have it in the budget for 2021, is there another way that we can find a way to actually come up with those expenses so that we can take care of that particular issue or that particular request, should I say?
Um, the short answer would be yes. Um, the, um, the, the fire station, the bond for the fire station will be paid for out of the fire fund. We collect a, um, separate tax, uh, fire district tax. And so the proceeds, some of the proceeds from that tax are what's going to pay for the fire, uh, for the, uh, bond for this station. Um, to, the only source that we would have to pay for the additional, um, amount that would be added to that bond would be if we took money out of our cash reserve. I, I would not recommend that the board do that because we're trying to build it, you know, so that we have, um, so that we build up to our six-month reserve. But that is a possible funding source, but again, that would be something that the, the board would have to approve. And, and again, I, you know, I would not recommend that the board use the cash reserve. Um, but that's the only other source of funding that I could see it, would, could see at this point.
So would you have to, or would you need time to actually go back and maybe you and Brittany come together and figure out if there are other financial or funding sources that we can look at and then maybe report that back to us? Or you're certain that that is the only funding source, period?
I'm certain that's the only other funding source. We, this budget was pretty tight and the, I mean, that's the only, uh, we don't have, all of the revenue that we have coming in has been, has been accounted for. Um, so I, you know, the only caveat to that would be that Um, so I, you know, the only caveat to that would be that if for some reason we had, that we way under budgeted our sales tax revenue and at the end of the year. But, but even at that, I mean, you're looking at having to sustain, um, a payment of at least, uh, half a million dollars for, and it depends on the term of the bond. But you, you'd have to sustain that for a, a, a minimum of 10 years. So you, you wanna have a dedicated source, funding source that's gonna carry you for that period of time. And a, at this point, I'd say we don't have that.
So when we moved forward previously to actually purchase our real cousins. And we had talked about, um, the refurbishing of it. You know, we had, um, our, um, project manager come in, give us a diagram of what we projected for it to look like. Um, did we at that particular time begin to look in and research to say, okay, well, we know this is what we wanna do? Where are we gonna actually get those funds? Or was that just displayed to us without thinking what is gonna be the funding source to actually get it refurbished?
Now, the most likely source for the funding that project would be a splosh. Um, that's a, a large project and that's where most of our capital projects, we find where in the past, the history has been that we have funded the majority of our capital projects in, uh, with, in, in a splosh. Um, and, and, and again, that one, um, is one of those projects that would be most likely funded with a splosh. It's difficult for us to generate enough, uh, revenue to fund a 10, which would be roughly 10, 11 million dollar project. Um, in the general, in the general fund because our operating costs are, are, are what they are. So, um, we have to have, generate additional revenues that are used for projects outside of our general fund and that's where we get it.
Well, I know our next boss is what, 2022, I believe?
Next boss is 2023.
2023?
Yeah.
So.
We would vote, actually put everything together in 2022 and it would go into effect in 2023.
Okay. So I, I'd just like to see if, if possible, you know, and I know we have a splosh committee. And that's something that would have to go to them if we can do our best, you know, uh, if we can make that a priority.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think that, that would be a good project, actually, for this.
Commissioner is okay with making that a priority for splosh?
Mr. Chairman. I got, um, I got one in front of me. I got one in front of me that come right to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we approved the purchase of the cousins property in March. Which was prior to COVID-19 being a, being an issue in our county. And what I would say is that, you know, I think with, you know, that it was a good purchase. But I think that it's important that we go back and we really look at what the, how that project is going to look now that we are eight months into a different world. I mean, you know, we, we look at, um, recreation and how that's different. And the way that we were looking at that building in March is going to be substantially different now. And so I, I, I looked and it looked as though that the project renovation costs were about eight to nine million dollars at that time. But the world has changed. And I think that it's important before we jump into a renovation project based on that original design and that original, um, recommendation, that we go back and we revisit it. I agree that it would be an excellent project to put on a splosh. But I don't think you can look at pre-COVID and, and have that building look the same. The world is different now and it's, and it's not gonna go back to the way it was. So we really need to look at how we utilize that building moving forward and not the way that we were looking at it at that time.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if, if my memory is still right, is if somebody would kinda help me. Is that we were, we're looking at and we're burning a fire station that we never did budget any money for. And that was during the, uh, COVID, or where COVID was going on. And I supported it. I supported it because I said that if the citizens over in District One, which I have, uh, ten people there need a fire station, then we should support it. But I also said, what about the citizens over here in town who wanted a project to just as well? But I noticed, you know, since I've, I've been in this board, it's always when funds are requested for in town, we find all kind of excuses. And I know personally, since I've been here for a while, that if government wants to do something, if government wants to build a building, if the government wants to renovate a building, same we renovated this building, that it can do it. So I think we can make excuses and I think that's basically if, if they're what you wanna do. Make excuses for not, uh, uh, renovating our real cousin's school and say, well, that's just too much money. Or we just can't burn it. You find excuse after excuse after excuse. Said not to do the same for in town as you would do in the rural county. All grants go in the rural county. Uh, you had to apply, say, for a business grant in the rural county and nothing is done in the city. And I believe that our tax dollars are just as much, you know, the tax dollars that were spent all over the county. And, uh, I, you know, my, my heart goes out to the citizens and, and, you know, maybe this is maybe a wake up call for them. The ones who may wanna listen, you know, it's, it's time for a change. Cause every time we wanna do something in the county, it gets done. I don't care what it is. But when it come to the city, oh no, we can't do this. And so obviously it come out of, of fund balance and it doesn't. I mean, we could burn it if we wanted to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. One more call for the vote. Um, it was motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason on a substitute motion that, um, that we burned 10 million dollars. Um, five for, um, the fire station four and five for, um, our real cousin's school. Um, all in favor? All opposed? The motion fails, um, three, two. Thank you, sir. Um, now we'll go back to the, um, original motion, um, which was motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Um, that we, Mr. Butler. Second time. Second time. The original motion was motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, um, that we burn five million dollars for fire station number four. We'll call for the vote. All in favor? All, I'm, I'm sorry, do that again, all in favor? Thank you. It passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is item number 13, Resolution R 090120E. And ru- resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners, appointing members of the Newton, of the Newton County Public Facilities Authority. Uh, Mr. Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so in order to, uh, start the Public Facilities Authority, um, we will, will need to appoint some members. And I believe the intention, although it's not absolutely required, is to appoint, uh, the five regular, uh, board members of this board onto the Public Facilities Authority simply for convenience. Um, the local legislation that created the authority, uh, has staggered terms. So if you look at the resolution, you'll see some blanks wherein two of you will be appointed for an initial term of three years. Another two will be for a term of two years and then one of you will be for a term of one year. Um, and obviously if there are any vacancies during the term, then, um, any replacement commissioner could be appointed to fill the remainder of that term. Um, so I guess we just need to have some discussion of who wants to take what seats on three, two, or one year initial terms? And then I guess, uh, approve the resolution.
So Sam, let me make sure I'm clear. All the commissioners are getting appointed to this authority, right?
That's right, but, but, well, it could be you, you could be on there as well. But I was thinking it would just be, uh, the, the five regular commissioners would be appointed, yes.
Commissioner Schultz.
Well, I'm only gonna be here till the end of December, so there's not a four month term or three month term.
And so you, I guess you would serve until your replacement comes on, then, yeah.
Um, let's get a, let's get a motion so we could discuss this, please. Thank you, sir, Commissioner Mason.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we approve R 090120E, which is a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners, appointing members of the Newton County Public Facilities Authority.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by, um, if you, yeah, thank you, sir. I had to get you to speak, cause shaking your head, so Miss Jacket can get it for the minutes. Um, and second by Commissioner Edwards. Um, discussion, please. End of discussion. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm not sure what to ask first, but I'll, I'll just, okay, so two, two and one. Right? Okay. Would, go ahead.
Well, so the, uh, the brain trust at the Capitol was responsible for this legislation. We sort of asked for it and they said, this is what you're gonna get. So, uh, the intent is that you wouldn't have to replace the whole board all at once. And so it's for staggered terms. A- after two, two and one is up, it goes to three year terms. So this is what's needed at the start to, to get a rolling on off cycle.
Well, I'll volunteer for the one year term.
So, so. I wanna do that.
Let me ask you something. So it'll make sure everybody's clear. So the commissioners can roll off and we can put citizens on or what's, can you explain it?
Yes. Um, in, in some of your authorities, uh, where there is a desire for a lot of public in, involvement, it makes a lot of sense to have, uh, citizens be on here. And you do have the option of putting citizens on here. But, um, for the, for the startup or, or as they, as the terms expire.
Okay.
But really this authority is just doing the will of the, of you guys, the Board of Commissioners. So those citizens might not feel like they're doing much if they get appointed.
Okay. Any more quick, uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so how do we decide? Do we just say this is what term we want to take on? Like, do we do that now or is it, once it's passed, then we make that decision? How, how will that work?
So, yeah, it, tonight you would say, um, all right, uh, you, you two are the three year terms, one year term, two year terms. And then you will fill those into the resolution, then you'll approve the resolution.
Okay. So Commissioner Schultz.
So let's just say I volunteered for the three year term, but my commission seat ends in December. Could I continue to serve?
You could.
Oh.
I mean, I think, I think if the intent was just to have the Board of Commissioners serve, there'd be sort of a gentlewoman's agreement that you'd resign. But you could.
I just, I guess I have a, I, 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 I have kind of a fundamental problem with commissioners serving on a, on a board where there's not members of the general public on that board. At least in the solid waste authority, you have three commissioners, but the, the bulk of the votes are from citizens. So even though you have three commissioners or three members of the Board of Commissioners, there's four people that are non-commissioners. And I guess I just have a problem with having an authority that is strictly commissioners. So that's my opinion.
Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so i- if all the commissioners decide that they're gonna be on this authority initially, it's not gonna always be that way because that commissioner has, um, the right to say, I wanna appoint a specific citizen that would, um, represent that specific district, correct?
Yes, well, it's, so you, you could resign at any time or you can wait until your term expires. You would not personally have the right to pick who fills your seat. But I would hope that your fellow board members would recognize that that's your intent and, and basically go along with it.
So I would basically say, for example, if I wanted to resign, I can make a recommendation and then the board would decide, yes, we wanna bring this citizen on to the authority.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, say if, um, if my term was expiring, this, uh, first part of, of next year, then the new commissioner who will come on, what place would he or she have to fill that seat? And if, and if I took a three year term or two year term or whatever?
Well, you would, uh, and unless you resign, you would remain in that, in that seat. Um, but I, I think sort of the, the unspoken or informal expectation is that, uh, commissioners will resign once their Board of Commissioners term is over. But you could stay there. And then that commissioner, that new commissioner will be out of luck.
Why can, why can we dispel this chair, okay? Why can we as a board say that those terms would expire at the end of my, you know, at the end of, end of my term?
Can, I guess what the action is, can the board overrule the, what the state has already issued?
Um, I'm afraid not. We, we, we can put something in here that expresses the will of the board, but those initial term limits are state law. We can't overrule them.
So God, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry. So there's one, possibly three of us leaving in December, right? So we would, we would, typically we would come off the board when, when we were no longer commissioners, correct? I mean, that's what you just stated, I believe, correct?
That's the, I think that's the, the current thought process, but it is, the field is open for your discussion there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? If not, I'm gonna call for the, um, the numbers before we vote. It's all with Commissioner Wong, Commissioner Edwards. Wong.
One, one year term?
You should have started over here.
No, sir. Um, Commissioner Mason, two. Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
What's left?
Put me down for three.
Now we have a three and a two left.
Commissioner Henderson, two.
He didn't do that.
Three left, Commissioner Cowan. Make him say it.
So for, for the record, the, um, I think the understanding is that there's now a, a, a motion approved and seconded on the floor for, uh, Schultz and Cowan, a three year term. Henderson and Mason, a two year term and Edwards, a one year term.
All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, sir. It passed five to zero.
I've never been railroaded before, but I've never been party.
Uh, item number 14, Resolution R 090120F. Uh, item number fourteen, resolution R-090120F, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to appoint Commissioner to the Newton County Solid Waste Management Authority, effective October the first, 2020. Mr. Sam. Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so, a- as you know, uh, I believe Commissioner Schultz intends to resign effective September thirty, uh, uh, is that right? Um, and so, um, this would be for purposes of appointing her replacement on the Solid Waste Management Authority.
Also, we need.
Well, I guess, um, we can, I guess we can have a discussion initially over who would like to fill that, and then we'll have a call for a motion.
Commissioner has the right man first.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, it, it, well, one of two questions. First, the first question is, who had this placed on the agenda? I mean, it's get, it, I think, my understanding had to be at least, um, three commissioners, two, three, or two? Play some, play some agenda?
No.
Then, then the chairman can place one, then so could Lloyd, if he want to. So, you place it on the agenda.
I approve it, yeah.
I approve it. Who made the request? And it's a secret?
No, it's not a secret. Uh, you mean, who made the request to put this on the agenda?
Yes.
Uh... I had to go back through my emails, I'm trying to find out.
It's a secret.
Not, not a secret.
Well, you know, if I made a rec, this is common, if I made the request, and you know, since J.C. made the request, and I said, well, okay, I'm gonna put it on the agenda. But anyway, we know that the first part of the year, there's gonna be a new commissioner. We know that. So why are we making this decision, this decision now about who goes on board? Why can't it be made when, uh, when the new commissioner comes aboard? We just, we just did, what we just did prior to this, was give everybody a term. And now, we're stopping, hesitating, and replacing, um, Commissioner Schultz's seat on the Solid Waste Authority now. It could, you know, typically, what I thought is just J.C. thinking, when the chairman came on board, every, every board that Keith Ellis was on, the former chair, you replaced him. You replaced, whatever it was, you replaced him. So, why has I, why, why have this changed now? She should, uh, Ms. Sanders should replace Commissioner Schultz when she come on.
Well, Commissioner, uh, it's, from my understanding, that Commissioner Schultz is planning, is resigning. Is that correct, Commissioner Schultz? And the board has to make an appointment. Is that, is that correct, Sam? Thank you. Um, but that's, go ahead.
Questions, yes. When I tried to make an appointment on this board, everybody had said, well, yay on it. And my apartment that I wanted to make was Mr. Hearsay, Junior Hearsay, on the board. And it was, you know, counted, it was turned down. And I've been, and that, my apartment has been vacant ever since. And, and District Four has had no representation. Now we running to fill, uh, Commissioner Schultz's seat. And I think it's, it's something that could wait, you know, and for the, for the new commissioner elect to come on, and see if she wanna resume, uh, Commissioner Schultz's responsibility and duties.
Thanks, sir. Anyone, anyone else? I mean, Sam, so, um, again, Commissioner Schultz is resigning her post. Um, the Board of Commissioners have the duty to fill her seat. Is that correct?
And by law, uh, three members of the authority have to be BOC members, so it has to come from the board.
Okay. So tonight, we're simply saying choose a board member here tonight, um, to fill her seat. Is that correct?
That's right. So that would get filled into the blank there.
Any, anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. If, if, uh, Commissioner Schultz is stepping down, I would gladly take her place, if, if this board so chooses.
Are you calling for a motion?
Um, yeah. Are you making that in the form of a motion?
Yeah.
County attorney said you can.
Okay, I guess I'll make that in the form of a motion. I'd like to, the motion would be to nominate myself for the, the vacated spot by Ms. Commissioner Schultz on the Newton County Solid Waste Authority.
Second. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. End of discussion? End of discussion? Nasty. All in favor? All opposed? Can you state your reason, please?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And would it go on the record?
Ms. Jackie? Yes.
You know, never in, in my life, uh, since I've been on the board, have, uh, uh, there's been two actions. First action was that you stay on the board as long as you want to. Three years, even after you, um, uh, even after you're no longer as popular in the, in the, your district as you used to. You don't end it within your term. And now you, uh, resign, and you, uh, you able to, uh, uh, have a meeting after the meeting, place that on the agenda, which I think I know who we asked for it to be on the agenda, from what I've heard, and have somebody to make a motion themselves to be appointed on the board. It sound like a prior discussion. But if, but only thing of what I'm saying to this, we truly gonna be what we always talk about, and what I've seen in the paper, with all that, always got at one meeting and said, Newton, uh, what, Newton One. And we need to rethink and be more transparent, these to our citizens of, of Newton County. Be transparent. And what I mean by that is, is that work for them, not against them. Uh, the solid, solid waste authority should, it should've been replaced by the, by the commissioner-elect. I think that's the only right thing to do. And this way, you pick and choose who you may want, because you may not want the person who's elected to be in that seat for whatever reason. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. So let me respond to what you just said, because, um, Sam, you are the county attorney for the Solid Waste Authority, that's correct?
Um.
For the solid, you represent the Solid Waste Authority?
I, I certainly do, yes.
Thank you, sir. Um, is it in the law that the chairman has to be on that, um, authority?
That you have to be on the authority? That's not a legal requirement.
Okay, so, thank you, sir. We'll fix that. Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Commissioner, former Commissioner Sims was on the Solid Waste Authority, and when he determined that he was not going to run for reelection, he stayed on the Solid Waste Authority until approximately July of the, of his term. And then he resigned from the Solid Waste Authority. So he could give an, another commissioner an opportunity to fill his position and still be available for consultation. And so that is part of the reason that I have chosen to resign at this point, is so that, um, another commissioner can take that seat, and I can still be available for consultation if necessary.
Thank you. Um, anyone else before we move on? We're gonna move on. Item number fourteen, I mean, item number fifteen, I'm sorry. County Attorney, um, Finance Approval Amendment to the Agreement for the County Jail Medical Service with NAF Care. Um, Mr. Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your consent agenda, uh, you approved an amendment to the original agreement that covered fiscal year 2020. Um, in the second half of 2020, obviously COVID-19 hit, and there were additional services required, uh, medical services at the county jail. So, uh, this amendment, uh, although it has already expired, it only ran from, I believe, April through June of 2020, um, is for, uh, additional services at the county jail to be provided by NAF Care for COVID-19 response. And, um, this amendment, I believe, will be, or has been submitted to the state for reimbursement under the CARES Act, uh, reimbursement funding. Um, so it's a just, it's just ten ex, ten thousand extra dollars a month for those three months.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. All in favor? It passes five to zero. Um, next is item number sixteen. Carnish Creek Purchasing Requesting Approval of Biomechs Contract for Dred- Dredging and De-watering of the Carnish Creek Slug Lagoons. Mr. Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is a, a standard county form contract, um, that has gone under my review, um, at the request of James Brown, who's in the audience tonight. Um, I understand that, uh, they need to dredge the lagoons, and they're hiring a company to do it, and I'm sure he can answer any technical questions you may have.
I seek a motion, please.
Move for approval of the Biomechs contract for dredging and de-watering of Carnish Creek Slug Lagoons.
It's been motioned by Commissioner, uh, Schultz and second by Commissioner Henderson. End of discussion. All in favor? Passes five, five to vote. Next is item number seventeen, County Manager Discussion in Consideration of Coronavirus Relief Fund. Mr. Chair.
Ms. Chairman, I would like to ask that we, um, delay this. Since we got word that there will be a second phase, I would like to ask then that we delay it, um, at least until the next meeting, until we find out what that amount will be, so I can get the correct, uh, figures and all in the, uh, agreement.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion that we table this.
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second, that we table this and second by Commissioner Edwards.
So are we tabling it till the next meeting, or are we tabling it, we need to set a date, right?
Um, Mr. Chairman, was your communication that they thought they would be able to tell us something quickly, or?
She said she would, they would give me a call tomorrow, so.
Okay.
I say the next agenda.
So, so let's table it till the fifteenth, and if we can, please.
All in favor? Thank you, it's tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to make comments about a general topic, I mean, about any topic. If you would, please come and state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Barbara Morgan, two one five eight East Street, Covington, Georgia. And the request for additional bonding for the Cousins Center prompts me to come up here tonight, because I watch, since you have approved the budget, it seems like every meeting, or every other meeting, there's a request for funds to be drawn down from the general fund, or for additional monies to be spent, bonding that wasn't prepared for. You've got a budget process, you've got a calendar, you follow it, follow the budget, make your decisions, and stick to it, and stop looking for ways to spend money that weren't included in the budget process. It's unsettling to citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, I, I, I'll, I'll look forward to hear, getting a briefing from you, maybe via the phone about, or some ambulance stuff. I understand you had a discussion with maybe the hospital?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to, uh, somehow, um, set up some type of work session in the near future, um, to go over, or maybe, um, see, gauge the interest of the rest of commissioners on how, uh, I believe it was, uh, Ms. Martin that went through a, a discussion or a description of how to, a, a new way of valuing the properties in Newton County in terms of, uh, for tax purposes. A, a, a new valuation method that she had described, I think, sometime back in the spring. I'd like to set up a, um, get some more details and maybe set up a work session on that, if we could, please, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, I wanted to take this time to say, uh, given, given the, all the controversy in our country right now, I wanna call out our law enforcement and tell them, I appreciate them very much. I wanna thank, especially our local, our local jurisdictions, the City of Covington, Porterdale, um, Oxford, and our Sheriff's Department here in Newton County, and let them know how much we appreciate them, uh, each and every day. Also, the last thing I have is, is the, the rec, the rec department, or the rec, uh, committee, uh, we need to, we need to talk about getting that set up, and, um, how we reopen city pond for use, um, on, on weekends for travel tournaments. If the county is not gonna use, if the rec department's not gonna use it, how do we get that reopened for travel tournaments on the weekend, uh, using whatever social distancing guidelines we, we need out there? There was a lot of money the county was, that was set to bring in on, on travel tournaments when we, the county, weren't using those fields. So, uh, and our, and our citizens, I'm getting complaints, our citizens can't use the fields when they aren't being played on. They use them to practice and with their kids and stuff, and getting a lot of complaints about that. So I would like to see us open the fields back up, if possible, um, uh, in the very near future, uh, if, if you don't mind, if we can, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Mason? Yeah. Okay. Um, Commissioner Schultz? Wait a minute. Commissioner, uh, Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, a brief comment. Somebody better turn this mic up loud. But my, my comment is, is this, and it's concerning our first responders, uh, our chef deputies, our firefighters, and, and the ones who, our, our receptionists who stand at desks when people come in, and, and, and my heart goes out to the people who have contracted, uh, COVID-19, uh, and employers and everybody, and especially the ones who have passed, and, and with my family, we're still grieving over my first cousin who, who passed a few months ago, that I didn't have the opportunity to, to say something good about the days that we were, we were together here on, on the top side of, of this planet. I think that it's, it's, we really need to take a good heart, think about what our first responder has to go through, because I know when family members get sick, that could the fire department, that the police department, and it'd be whole, um, about six, seven people's in, in your home, trying to assist the person who is ill. And, and they'd be kind of, uh, you know, kind of exposed to a whole lot of stuff, and giving people housing. And we know right now COVID-19. And then not to be able to come up with a plan, um, uh, to give them hazardous pay, that mostly every, well, I'm, I'm just gonna say, everybody around here in Covington and, and surrounding kind of, uh, counties I've got, is speaking volume on ourselves, on us, how much we talk about caring about our first responder, but yet there's no action. And I think that needs to change. When you, if you care about somebody, you do something for them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I wanna say I appreciate your, um, leadership, along with Lloyd, uh, and seeing about helping out Porterdale with their grass cutting and lawn maintenance situation out there. They, um, we know Porterdale's running some financial difficulties, and it's good for the county to be able to help them and assist them in keeping that, uh, uh, village out there looking good. So, I appreciate, uh, y'all doing that. And also, uh, I think it's time, with a, the advent of a new commissioner coming on board, is go ahead and start planning for a strategic planning session, training session after the first of the year, so that we can update the new commissioner on where we are, uh, what's our goals, um, what's our direction in the county. So. So, uh, Ms. Chairman, I'll just throw that out to you as, uh, something that maybe you can work on.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kerr? Have any to think?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
We do have a need tonight for executive session. I think it's, uh, personnel and, uh, potential litigation. So, I seek a motion that we move into executive session. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz, uh, that we move into executive session. All in favor? Thank you. Guys, we, also, we would not be taking a vote tonight.